Would you join me in prayer? Father, we acknowledge your goodness today. Lord, as we look around and we see the changing of the leaves and the beauty all around us, your fingerprints and your faithfulness are everywhere for those who have eyes to see it. And Lord, we thank you for the beautiful place we get to live, this creation that reflects your own beauty. We live in a world that has need of light, and you bring light and a need of safety, and you put structures in place to bring about goodness and safety and security. And so, we thank you for our city. We thank you for the stewards of our city, from the waterworks to the first responders, to the council members. And Father, we ask in this meeting this afternoon that you would give wisdom with the matters that are on the table today, that that wisdom would cause flourishing to prevail, that unity and clarity would reign in conversation and discussion. And we ask that those who make the decisions would do them for the ultimate good of Prescott and the ultimate glory of your name. We thank you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Good to see you. All right, let's do roll call.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Shul.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Here.
All are present.
Proclamations?
Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2021.
Thank you.
Councilmember, could you use the microphone, please, so folks listening? Thank you.
Thank you. And after I read the proclamation, I'll ask you to say a few words. Thank you. Whereas, since a staggering number of families and students in the Prescott area live in crises and are homeless, Prescott, Arizona joins the nation in recognizing November as Homeless Awareness Month. Last year, the Prescott and Humboldt Unified School Districts identified 135 homeless students. Whereas, the lack of a healthy support system causes employment to suffer, housing struggles, child care challenges, children cannot excel in education. Life skills training, mentoring, discipleship, and support are necessary for successful transformation to independent living for homeless families. Whereas, through the collaborative efforts and support of Prescott Businesses, Churches, neighborhoods, clubs, and individuals, homeless families can transform and rebuild their lives and live stable, self-sufficient, and independent lives. Whereas, since its incorporation in 2013, Agape House of Prescott has provided an interim place to call home for families in the Prescott area. Agape House helps families in crisis to rebuild, transform, and become self-sufficient members of society. Agape House believes that providing housing alone is not the answer, but healing, growing, and training in Christ will end the cycle of homelessness. They offer a safe place to raise their family and rebuild relationships. And Agape House has an 86% success rate of families living independently one year after graduation from Agape House. Now, therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim November 2021 as Homelessness Awareness Month. So please say a few words, and first of all, please refresh our memories about the origins of the word "Agape," and I hope I said it right.
Agape means unconditional love, which means that we care for people no matter what the circumstances. Greg, I know you're on your way out, but I just wanted to say thank you for your support over the last few years. You have led leadership, and we are very pleased with your decision and change for the better. It is wonderful to support individuals, but it's better to support organizations that are going to help them change their lives forever. So that is great. That was a really wonderful thing. We've participated in that a lot. Also, the Community Development Grant, which you are the overseer of, we thank you again for your support and the leadership that you have given to our city. So thank you for all of those, and Tenney is also a part of that, and we welcome Phil Good, as you will be the next mayor. So thank you for your support, and we appreciate each of you in supporting homeless families who are trying to get their lives back together. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that any member would like to pull from the consent agenda at this time?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item F and item G.
F and G, okay. Anyone else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 7A through 7H, except for F and G.
Second. The motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Councilman Good, item F.
Thank you, Mayor. I know on the agenda, it's talking about approving this contract in the amount of $60,243.50. But I do want to mention in the background material that replacement of these HVAC units was covered under our insurance company, so we will get full reimbursement for this through the insurance coverage. So the actual cost is really no net cost to the city. We've already received $47,000 from the insurance company with an additional $15,000 plus being held, subject to completion of the repairs. So I just thought it was important for the people that are monitoring the agenda to know that this is not an actual allocation of city funds for these repairs. It's simply a total amount of cost that's being reimbursed by insurance. So with that, I would move to approve item 7F, Approval of City Contract 2022-105, for the purchase and installation of seven HVAC units from HACI Services LLC using Yavapai College Job Order Contract Number 21-328 in the amount of $60,243.50.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Councilman Good, item G.
Item G, which is a recommendation for multiple deferred compensation program options for our city staff that wishes to participate in these. So we have an option through the Arizona State Retirement System. We have an option from Nationwide Deferred Compensation Plan, and we also have an option from Mission Square Deferred Compensation Plan. So looking at the backup material and comparing these three as far as what they might be able to offer, I found it particularly clear that there was no reference to actual performance of any of these plans. So cost is one thing, but being able to understand what the overhead is for each one of these plans, what the net performance of the plans themselves should be made very clear to those employees who wish to participate in a deferred compensation plan. And just because ASRS is bigger than the other ones should not be the reason why you make a decision. I've been involved in multiple analyses of 401K plans from various organizations in the companies that I worked for, and when you look at the administrative overhead costs, sometimes they were so substantial that the net benefit for the employee was very, very degraded. And after exposing some of those, we made decisions to move to much more lower-cost plans that were much more beneficial to the employee. So I would like to see the actual performance of these plans made clear to the employees before they have to make a decision on which, if any, they want to participate in. So I'm not sure that time is of the essence here, but maybe you can answer that question for me, Ms. Lyra.
Yeah, Mayor Members of the Council, Joyce Lyra, Human Resources Director. I have a short presentation I'll go through with you. Maybe this will clarify some of the things for you.
That's very timely, thank you.
Yeah. Just in case. So today, we're asking you to approve three resolutions, and these are for deferred compensation programs, two who are ready in existence, and one is to add a new one. So right now, we have a couple of different options for employees for employee savings. The first is state pension plans that you all know about. They're mandatory, one with ASRS and one with Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. And then we have existing City of Prescott plans. We have Nationwide Insurance, and then we have Mission Square, which is formerly ICMA. Whoops. So a little bit about the differences on these programs. Both the City 457 plans have been around for many years, and they're voluntary. I believe Mission Square started probably, we started with them in about 1988, and we have a very old resolution with them. Mostly, our general employees participate with Mission Square. They have approximately, we have approximately $13 million in assets with them. And there's probably about 199 employees, including quite a few retirees. And then we also have Nationwide. Mostly, they consist of public safety employees. Nationwide is known with fire around the country, so a lot of our firefighters participate, and we have about approximately 10 million with them. And 102 employees participate with that. So ASRS came about probably three or four years ago. It was a state plan, and they went out for bid to see if they could have other cities and towns and schools participate in the plan. And so, many organizations such as City of Surprise, Buckeye, Yavapai County just added them most recently, I think, back a couple months ago. And Nationwide actually won the bid. So Nationwide is the key fiduciary for the ASRS plan. And so, what ASRS is allowing is they're allowing cooperative partnerships with different cities and towns throughout Arizona. There's state legislation out there that as of 2022, it looks like they will allow any employee to participate, even if the organization doesn't choose to get a resolution like we're recommending today. So what's the difference between the two? The ASRS plan actually, due to a large economy of scale, offers institutional funds, whereas the other two city funds offer more retail funds. So in other words, ASRS, in the majority of cases, is most less expensive than the other two plans. As you can see, ASRS has $2.3 billion as of the second quarter in 2021, which is quite a bit of assets, and our two plans have $23 million in assets. And ASRS has more of a streamlined plan and streamlined investment options, but they still offer brokerage through Charles Swab, and we're also offering a 401A. And the City 457 plans have a wider range of investments. If you look at the ASRS plans, you can see the administrative fees are .06, and this is all fully employee-paid, where the other two plans, again, because of the economy of scale, they're paying, they're paying more. We were able to negotiate Mission Square and get those fees down to zero once a new resolution is approved, but Nationwide is staying at their .70. So you might ask, why are we still keeping Nationwide? Well, 50% of our employees, and most of them are retirees, are in their fixed asset plan. That is 3.5% guaranteed. So we've walled that off, but because of that, we're not getting a lot of new funding in there. So we didn't want to remove Nationwide. We want to educate our employees better to let them know maybe the other two funds might be the way to go. So what we would do from here is they have a plan, which basically is a do-it-yourself plan, where the employee can just go in and pick the funds they want. They have another plan where it's automatic through computerized, and the computer will pick the funds for you, or you can work with an actual investment advisor, and they will help the employee through it. All employees can contribute up to $19,500 a year if they're under age 50, and another $6,500 if they're over 50. And so, we're really confident the ASRS has very strong performance history, so that's why we want to have Nationwide, who represents ASRS, come to us, as well as Mission Square, and have meetings going forward for this. And what we would do is HR Nationwide, and also Mission Square will offer virtual education sessions and will have them come in to the city and actually provide information, and then assist employees who would like to enroll in the program, and people can move their money as well. So if that'll take any questions.
Any one of our city employees who wants to participate in a deferred compensation plan can elect to participate, but then they have a choice between these three?
Yeah, and they could also split their $19,500. I'm not saying they're going to contribute that, but let's say they have $100 a month they want to contribute, they can put $33 in each one, and they have a choice on to do that.
It's pretty well-known that the state ASRS is significantly underfunded. They're not as bad as PSPRS, but they're pretty bad. So I use the analogy that if you looked at two people, and this person has two bullet holes in them, and this person only has one, then the one with one bullet hole is healthier. I don't know if that's particularly true, but clearly, we have challenges not only in ASRS, and of course, we have our own plans to solve our unfunded liability in PSPRS. So even though overhead administrative fees are less, you still have to balance that with the actual performance, because I'd rather take somebody who had a higher administrative fee but substantially better performance than someone who had a lower administrative fee but barely poor performance. And that's kind of where ASRS has landed. So it's important for me that all of our employees have a very clear understanding of which plan that they want to participate in and be able to make their choices based upon a good understanding of what the risks are and what the potential performance long-term can be.
Thank you, Councilman, and absolutely, you're right. Mark Woodfell, City of Prescott Finance Director, and Joyce and I worked with the different agencies on this. And just to clarify some things, the ASRS 457 plan is coordinated and bid out by ASRS, but it's not invested in ASRS. It's invested in Nationwide and different, not Nationwide, but different funds, Vanguard, other funds like that. So that's what the employees would be buying into is to those funds, not into ASRS.
Well, that's a substantial comfort, thank you.
Yeah. And what we negotiated with these contracts was a lower fee. So when an employee sits down with these advisors, they will be shown the plans with the one-year, the five-year, the year-to-date yield, net yield, on these funds as they pick their different funds. And each of these funds have numerous, 20, 30, different fund options through Vanguard or different mutual fund types, or they can do the broker thing, invest directing in EFTs or in the stock market if the employee chooses. But they're not investing in Nationwide or in ASRS or in Mission Square. It's actually in mutual funds and those type of things. They're only administered by those areas and held in trust through the city.
So how are the accounts handled? Do you have, obviously, individual accounts for individual participants? And those accounts are then individually held in security status so that as the employee decides whether they want to change asset allocations or equity versus guaranteed income, et cetera, they know that their accounts are pretty well assured over that period of time?
Well, they're assured as any mutual fund, but yes, they're held in trust individually by the person. So even if you're at the city, your fund, my fund, is its own fund. It's not commingled with the rest. However, Joyce does, has no impact on how I do in my fund. It depends on what we invest in, in these various securities. Again, they're all securities. They're not ASRS or any of that. That's just where the pension is.
Well, that's, I think that kind of answers most of my concerns, and as long as the employees are given substantial understanding of what their options are and then have an opportunity to potentially change from one manager to another, I think they're probably going to be well-served by these choices. So with that, I think my concerns have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Joyce, appreciate it. Entertain a motion here?
Well, let's see. I move we adopt multiple resolutions related to deferred compensation programs as follows. Are we going to have to do this in a series, Matt?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution Number 2021-1795, Approving Participation in the Deferred Compensation Program through the Arizona State Retirement System, ASRS.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2021-1800, Affirming and Confirming Participation in the Nationwide Deferred Compensation Plan.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2021-1801, Affirming and Confirming Participation in the Mission Square Deferred Compensation Plan.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right.
Let's go to Consent Ordinance, Item 8A, please.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-1783, in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of an ingress and egress easement agreement from Religious Science Church of Prescott, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Entertain a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, we'll take a motion and then do discussion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Ordinance 8A.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion, Councilman Good?
Yes, I understand this is an easement for ingress and egress around the Religious Science Church of Prescott, so there's access to the archery range. And as part of the agreement, the city is to construct and install the city's, at the city's expense, a screening fence along the northern border of the city's archery range. So I didn't see any reference to the cost of this fence. Exactly what is the ingress and egress? Is it a trail? Is it a road? Is it a improved road? What exactly is going to be constructed for this, and what is the cost to the city?
Mayor, Council, Craig Doss, Public Works. Ultimately, we submitted this item through our property management as Public Works, but this entire agreement, everything was managed through Recreation Services. So I do not have any specific information for you, other than the exhibits that were supplied as part of the agenda item.
Tim was just here, did he leave?
Yeah.
Well, I see a map showing the ingress and egress, but there's no reference to the cost of this fence and what exactly the ingress and egress will be. I mean, it's just, it's a map with some... I don't know, anybody can read it better than I can. It just looks like a way to get in and out, but I'm not exactly sure.
There is a legal description of the ingress and egress. That's included under Exhibit A in our materials. It doesn't make reference to the fence itself, you're right about that.
The fence cost is $10,000, and the archery range will participate in that, and it is a road for access.
So we are going to construct a road?
Are you aware of, is a road being built?
I believe it already exists, with the exception of the cross-through of the existing four-strand barbed wire fence that exists.
Hey, can I put you on speaker?
So the only thing we're constructing is a fence of some sort for a total cost of $10,000?
Hey, Joe, do you want to address some of these questions?
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm in another meeting, but the fence will be a little under $10,000. We've talked to the archery range, and they will participate financially in that, and it will be a road that will access that archery range.
But the road is already constructed and exists now?
Does the road already exist now, Joe?
It does not.
It does not? Is it a paved access?
No, we'll put asphalt millings on it.
So how much is that going to cost?
Does the $10,000 cost include the millings and the whole bit?
Yes.
Okay.
The city owns the property, correct?
They have an easement from the church.
But does the city own the property of the archery range?
Yes.
So any improvements benefits the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, then, well, that answers my questions.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, we have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to Item 9A, please.
Approval of WSA 21-011, Water Service Agreement Application Submitted by Kim Lee Horn on behalf of the Owner Shipping Yard LLC Prescott, Location APN 113-15-059 and 113-15-061.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Gwen Roach with Public Works. We've got a couple of water service agreements on the agenda this afternoon. The first one is for WSA 21-011, which is a food truck, I guess, park, if you will. It's located here at the corner of South Monizuma and Willis Streets, right here, on a vacant parcel. If you go out there today, you may see a food truck, a lot of cars parked here, but it's the applicant's intent to develop this site with some improvements. There we go. Here on the site, there will be seven food trucks, location... Here on the site, there will be seven food trucks locations. One, two, three, there's one right here, four, five, six, seven. They also intend to run sewer yard line with a common grease trap here at the alley location, as well as a water line so that each food truck location would have its own hose bib to hook up. There will be ADA potable restrooms here, but they're not permanent. One of the reasons for this is because this property is primarily located in the FEMA floodway, as well as the FEMA floodplain. And structures cannot be, the permanent structures cannot be located in the floodway in order to not impede properties up or downstream from it. So in this case, everything on this side is portable, removable, transferable, if you will. There's a small picnic seating area here, and this is the trash dumpster location. A water demand analysis was submitted for it based on 14 employees, two employees per truck in seven different trucks, serving approximately 40 meals a day. The water usage estimate is 2.6 acre feet for the entire site. This project went before the Water Issues Committee on, in September 7th, 2021, and was voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think this is a quite innovative use of this particular parcel. Having it in the FEMA floodway and floodplain made it particularly difficult to put anything in there. And as we know, it's been vacant for forever, seems like. So being able to put a food truck cord in here that has the potential for those food trucks to have to move should there be a major flooding event, I think is just remarkably creative. So I would be a big supporter of approving this.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve water service agreement 21-011.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item 9B, please.
Approval of WSA 21-012, a water service agreement application submitted by Michael Lafferty on behalf of property owner Dell's View Apartments and city contract number 2017-009A3, an amendment to city contract number 2017-009, location 2051 Willow Lake Road, APN 106-13-031H.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This water service agreement request is a little bit different from what we currently do under our current policy because this property has an existing contract with the city to serve water. Because there is an existing contract, today we're looking at the Third Amendment to the original contract for this site, which on this map here is located just west of SR89 and is located on Willow Lake Road. The original contract was for 200 dwelling units, apartment dwelling units here on this property, and it was allocated in 2017. Under the original contract, phase one was to, to construct 99 dwelling units. The First Amendment to that contract happened in, later in 2017, where they added an additional 101 dwelling units for a total of 200 dwelling units for the project. Amendment number two, granted a one-year extension for the, some of the performance measures within the original contract required them to receive building permits within a certain timeframe, which they did not do. The property changed hands to a new owner and he requested a one, a one-year, one-time extension of time to start the project, which he did do. He built buildings three and four, which are located here, shortly after receiving that extension, that timeframe extension. Today, he's getting ready, the contractor, Mr. Lafferty, is getting ready to build buildings one and two, which will be located here along the front of the property. In order to do that, he needs to separate this portion of the lot, this north portion of the lot, from the south portion of the lot for financing purposes. The bank won't be in second, won't allow him to be in, themselves to be in second position on a construction loan for the construction of buildings one and two. So they've requested that the lot be split simply for the financing purposes. Because we're amending the contract, we remove the water allocation in terms of allocating a specific amount of water and have amended it to say that there would be no more than 200 dwelling units, which was the original request, as well as removing the lot split language. And we've added new timelines in for construction. They must pull building permits within one year and complete construction and receive certificates of occupancy for buildings one and two within two years of the approval of this contract amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. This item went before the Water Issues Committee in September and was unanimously approved to forward to council for approval.
Thank you, Gwen. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. Could you please clarify why there was originally language prohibiting a lot split? Why was that there?
So under the 2017 water policy that was in effect at that time, the splitting of lots for additional connections was discouraged. And so it is standard template language in water service agreements at that time that lot splitting is not allowed. Primarily, it affected water service agreements for single lots or only just a handful of lots so that they wouldn't continue to split those lots and add additional dwelling units.
So he's going to add an additional, originally he was okayed for 100 and now he's doubling the amount?
He was originally okay for 200 dwelling units. His current contract is for 200 dwelling units, and this amendment is still at 200 dwelling units. The original contract was for 96 and the First Amendment, I'm sorry, for 99, and the First Amendment added an additional 101 lots.
So it was originally 99 units?
In 2017, it was 99, and in late 2017, it, it became 200. So since 2017, he has had contractually the right to build 200 dwelling units.
Councilman Tenney?
We've had a lot of discussion recently around individual submetering in situations where there are multiple dwelling units. How, how would that potentially interface with, with this approval today?
Councilman Tenney, that, that amendment to city code will be in effect November the 12th. We have not issued permits for this project, so that would be a requirement of this project if the permits were to be issued after November the 12th.
Terrific. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Oh, I apologize, Greg, because it's an apartment building and he's correct. In an apartment building, if they have a common plumbing system, there would be no And that would be true under the amendment of any project.
We, we talked about a different scenario, obviously, for, yeah, exactly, for single family dwellings. There, there had been some discussion, I'm not necessarily talking about imposing it on this, but we'd had some discussion as well about if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, so to speak, if it's, if it's useful, where there's individual dwelling units, it, there, we, we might at some future point, look at, look at that for apartments. I'd be interested in continuing that discussion in the future if we could, although again, it looks like it's not going to be applicable to this particular permit.
Public comment, sir?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve WSA 21-012.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Item C, please.
We also need a motion on the contract amendment.
My apologies.
Mayor, I move that we approve city contract number 2017-009A3.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Sarah. Item C, please.
Approval of WSA 21-013, a water service agreement application submitted by KWPRS LLC on behalf of property owner City of Prescott, location APN 103-01-021H.
All right, this one's not, not open. Let's drag it up there. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This water service application is for a 217,323 square foot distribution center that is located near the city's Prescott Regional Airport. Within the building, there's approximately 11,000 square feet of office space. The company will be employing approximately 250 employees. The water estimate is at 15 gallons per day per employee, assuming a 24-hour-a-day operation seven days a week. We know that there'll be support staff on site 24 hours a day, but we know the majority of drivers will only be there at the beginning and ends of their shifts, not continually throughout the, the day. We have compared this to an existing site. We did not use water tables. In this case, we were able to compare the water usage to an existing site, and we estimate the water usage to be approximately 4.21 acre feet. This went before the Water Issue Subcommittee on October 5th, and they voted unanimously to approve this project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on it. It's located right here, right next to the city's water reclamation facility.
Very good. Thank you, Gwen. Questions, comments from the council on this one? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to approve WSA 21-013.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's go to item E, please.
Approval of WSA 21-016, a water service agreement application submitted by Astoria 2 LLC on behalf of property owner Michael Phan, location APN 105-04-002T and APN 106-18-067N.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This application is for the Astoria subdivision, phases 2A and 2B, which comprised of 100 single-family residential, single-family residential lots. The estimated water usage is 17 acre feet per year for the domestic potable requirement. There are open space tracts, A, B, and C, which are comprised of about 9.97 acres. The city uses a multiplier of 1.5 acre feet per acre of landscaped area, which equates to approximately 14.96 acre feet a year. The total estimated water usage for Astoria Phase 2 is 31.96 acre feet per year. The Water Subcommittee heard this on October the 5th and voted unanimously to approve this project and move it forward to council. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gwen. This must be a record for WSAs in a row or something.
It's my lucky day.
You're doing a good job. Questions, comments from the council, councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I have a concern, not, not about the water, but it's, I've heard from several residents of Prescott Lakes, they're concerned about access because it looks like this subdivision is kind of being piggybacked upon the original Astoria, and it looks like there's like a little, small umbilical cord-like road that attaches to the original subdivision.
Matt, can you help me here? Is this ingress, egress, or water?
The item is here. Looks like a WSA to me. Water service application. So the agendized item needs to focus on the water service application aspect and not go off topic. And otherwise, otherwise we're violating the open meeting law if we try to go too far astray on the agendized item.
Are these units going to be sprinkled?
You know? So the developer's saying sprinklers are not required under the fire code.
Okay.
Because it'll have secondary access?
Because there's a secondary form of egressing.
And, but that's, that won't be a permanent?
So we need to focus on the WSA, is that right, Matt?
Yeah, but we're talking about sprinklers and what triggered the need for sprinklers? And if the access is temporary, I don't understand because it's just going to be a temporary access for construction and not a permanent access?
Again, the agendized item is, is application for water service agreement.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to approve water application WSA 21-016.
Second.
Have a motion, second, please vote.
Passes 61.
All right, thank you, Gwen. Let's move on to item E, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-082 with Kim Lee Horn to provide engineering services for the Streets Division Snow Equipment Facility.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Craig Dosseth, Public Works. So this item is to approve city contract with Kim Lee Horn to provide design and engineering services for the Streets Division Snow Equipment Facility. So this is the, the location that's being utilized for the snow facility. Previously, we brought forward a contract for work for decommissioning items at the treatment plant at this site. And at, as the Sun Dog wastewater treatment plant is relocated through centralization to the airport water reclamation facility, portions of the wastewater treatment plant will be decommissioned, allowing for this site. Master planning for the Public Works operations on Sun Dog Ranch Road includes the relocation of the Streets Maintenance Division to the wastewater treatment plant site to allow for the long-term expansion of the solid waste division operations. The first part of the relocation will be to relocate the snow equipment to vacated portions of the wastewater treatment plant. So, and the previous project that came in, decommissioned the four old dewatering beds right here in this location, and then also created a roadway that, that comes up out of the site. So this is the new access roadway off of Sun Dog Ranch Road into the site, and we can see the, the pad in the background. And this is the extent of the pad now where those old four dewatering beds used, used to be. So the project will be constructed in phases. Phase one has been completed, including the, the demolition of the sludge beds, as well as the building pad for phase two construction. So when, when I brought phase one forward, there was questions to the cost associated with that. Phase one, the contract was 531,000. Ultimately, the final billing on the project was down to 468,000 from the 531. And of that 468,000, 385,000 of that was directly related with this project. The other 83,000 was utilized to crush all of our millings that we had stockpiled to be able to use other places. So from that project, there was additional savings that came into place also. The 385,000 could have been easily over $200,000, more than that, if we would have done a conventional project where we put it out and we, we pay them to bring in A, B in order to build a pad and import materials, other materials to build the, the access road. What we did was use ultimately a waste product. The inert debris and concrete at the transfer station was all crushed and utilized for this. So that created or afforded additional savings of over $200,000 towards the project by using a waste product, recycling it, be, you know, essentially green then, and, and using it to build the pad and the roadway at this site. So phase two will involve designing the new snow equipment facility, including construction of a concrete slab on grade, installation of the spreader racks and associated snow removal equipment to establish a safe working area for staff to outfit, outfit the equipment prior to storm events and protect the capital investment of the trucks and equipment utilized for the snow. for the snow response. This design will provide bid-ready plans and specifications to construct the second phase of the project. The design will incorporate worker safety features to prevent potential hazards such as slips and falls, hand and limb crushing points, head bumping and impact points, as well as protecting the city assets. The existing site and facility utilized to store the snow equipment is not large enough to hold all of the current equipment, is structurally deficient, requires staff to perform several unsafe maneuvers to dress each truck, and the space occupied is ultimately needed for solid waste activities. So, this is some of our existing facilities. Part of these facilities that we currently use, we used to be on Virginia Street, and they were cut apart and hauled out there, moved out there in 2003, scabbed back together. I'll use the word scabbed, as we can see here, some of the things that are in there. On days like yesterday, when we have a little breeze going on, this whole rack setup waves in the wind with the spreaders on it. We also, over the years, as we have more roadways to maintain, take care of, we have expanded the size of the spreaders that we're using. You can see one of the older ones here, the orange one, that only has, you know, about a foot of freeboard on the side there, where the new ones are considerably larger to haul more cubic yards of cinders and the snow product for the street maintenance work that we do with moving the snow. So, these are heavier units than what we're originally hanging on them as well. Part of that. Also, we have effects on our equipment because we are unfortunately using ice melting products. They are very corrosive on our equipment, like we see here. The ultimate snow facility with Phase 3 is anticipated to include a building and a pre-treatment facility and wash bay. Right now, today, we don't have an environmentally correct wash bay to be able to do significant maintenance of these trucks after they come off the streets. So, then we have this type of corrosion going on. This is an actual hole through the side of one of the trucks. It's in this area on the truck. This is some of our current trucks. As well as the rest of the year, every weekend and days when the trucks aren't being used, they are just sitting out there in the elements, in the sun. Granted, when it's snowing, they're running, so we're not trying to protect them from the snow. But it's the other elements that do deteriorate on them on a daily basis. And this is a synopsis here. The last new 10-wheel truck setup that we purchased was in 2021, and it was $310,000. And the last F-550, the smaller trucks, was in 2017 at $97,000 to give that primary fleet of six 10-wheelers and six F-550s on the front line of almost $2.5 million worth of asset in equipment that we operate and need to maintain in a better fashion if we can. The new facility, we weren't able to find a lot of real good pictures in here, so there's a catwalk on both sides. So, then there would be a bay for an individual unit and a catwalk that then you can get up and walk on in order to disconnect the chains. Currently, when we back the trucks in and under these, they are deliberately staged at an angle. So, we back the trucks in with the bed up a small amount, we latch it in in the back, we raise the dump bed up, which loosens the front chains, so we're able to unhook those. And then when we drop it down, it can or levers the tail up, and we're able to unhook those. So, if somebody asks, well, and we crawl up the side of the truck and up the side of these units in order to do that. If somebody was to ask us, well, can't you use a ladder? So, then it's safer. We'd have to start at one end of the structure then, and we could put a ladder up onto one side, do that, and we could go up and disconnect a front chain and come down the ladder. On the other side, you can't, there's not enough space to get in between the spreader units to be able to put a ladder in there in order to do that, as well as we'd have to go up, down, up, down, and you'd only be able to do dress one truck at a time from the end and go all the way down through the process like that, be extremely inefficient in regards to staff time to dress the trucks. As here, so we anticipate that the new structure will have catwalks to be able to get up with proper steps and/or ladders in order to be able to get on those catwalks, do that, eliminate any of us crawling on the trucks in order to do that, have a structure that's structurally sound and doesn't act as a flag in the wind. Here's another one. We would not go forward with any type of cover or structure like this with anticipation that the third phase would include a full building over it. So, we also looked further into then, all right, so what are we looking at for costs for consideration of this? For the Phase 2, that would be included from this designed contract for the spreader racks to house all of the primary truck spreader units, and then the plows would be staged underneath the spreader units. We're looking at a little less than $1 million, $900,000 for this Phase 2, which will be the concrete pad, all the structure to hold the units, catwalks and such to go with that. Then, okay, what's it going to cost us next then when we think about Phase 3, to go into the building and be able to include that? With that, our engineer has come up with about $2 million for Phase 3. So, ultimately, we'd be at about $3.2 million for Phase 1, 2, and 3. And in regards to current conditions of the market and how expensive some bids are coming in, we feel that the prices that they have on their estimate here is reflecting what we're seeing currently. So, if anything, hope is we get a year down the road and things can come back to a little bit more normal. Lumber has come down to, you know, more of a normal now, but that doesn't affect us here. Now, steel is still up there, sky-high, and steel buildings are really high, so they have that up there with a very high estimate, and we would hope that we would get to a little more normal with that another year out, and that then this estimate would be conservatively high. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions you have.
Thank you, Craig. It's a good overview, very informative.
Street Fund.
How long have I been asking, when are we going to get back to normal?
Too long.
Too long, yeah, exactly. Why were we asking about the Street Fund?
Just the financing part would come out of the Street Fund.
That's correct.
Which is a dedicated source.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember, where are we at? Tenny?
Appreciate the great presentation. The pictures helped me, when you brought this to us before and described it as like catwalks, what are we talking about? But all that helped me out quite a lot. You've made a good case for why this investment is necessary in terms of safety of our employees, which is paramount to me, but also in terms of efficiency for preparation for snow removal, protection of our assets, and future expansion for the solid waste division as well. It all lines up. It's kind of expensive, it really is, but it sounds like it's kind of investment that's going to save us money in the long term in terms of, and in addition to having a number of other benefits. So, I appreciate your presentation, and I'm in favor of it.
Craig, in the Midwest where they use a lot of salt and this corrosive stuff, I'm assuming they have these wash bays, is that what they do to kind of preserve their trucks back that way?
It is, and there's also pre-treatment products that they will run into the trucks into the wash bay, and they will treat the beds, the frames and everything of the trucks before they even go out.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's see, Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, Blair was here in '67. I would imagine that that was a really good lesson to make sure that we not only have snow removal equipment, but that we take good care of it.
And we don't sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilman Good?
Well, I know we had two 1 in 50-year storms, almost back-to-back, so we probably won't need this for 98 years, right? Just kidding. Should we be able to possibly build Phase 2 with the structures and the catwalks before we move forward with the total building? Because that's the biggest cost, and potentially with some return to normal on supplies and materials, that might be a lower final cost for the final covering of the equipment within these buildings. Am I understanding that correctly?
I lost you a little bit. Are you asking about building the building before the spreader?
The building after. You have the superstructure and the catwalks ready to actually be able to operate the trucks and the material and the equipment that'll go onto the trucks.
The entire spreader rack structure will be fully functional without the building?
Right.
And yes, then the building would be able to be built over the top of it? And as they're going through the structural analysis of the spreader rack, there will be consideration also whether the building would be able to attach to it as well, then ultimately reducing the beam sizes and such on the building. So, that will be considered in the structural analysis.
So, I know there's a lot of efforts to expand domestic production of steel that might be able to come online within the next two to three years. A lot of that's coming now from Communist China. They seem to have a highly state-subsidized steel industry there. So, maybe with some recovery of domestic production, that final phase where we build the total building structure might be a lower cost than even our current engineering estimates. Well, clearly, this is something that's absolutely needed, and unless...that's just a fact. So, right now, we're just voting on the engineering and planning costs.
That's correct.
All right.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertainer motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-082.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Item F, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-104 with AUI Inc. for the city's annual maintenance program utilizing pipe bursting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item is to approve a city contract for pipe bursting as part of the city's annual maintenance program. Every year, the wastewater division budgets $750,000 for replacement and/or rehabilitation of the city's sewer system. Sometimes we do cure and replace pipe, sometimes we do pipe bursting. This year, wastewater operations has identified several segments of sewer that are great candidates for bursting, so we are going to burst. So, now, pipe bursting is a semi-trenchless method of rehabilitation where it's approached with a high-density polyethylene pipe that's attached to a pneumatic bursting head, and the bursting head goes into the existing sewer, and it fractures and expands a corridor for the new HPE pipe to simultaneously be pulled into the sewer corridor as the pipe head bursts. Now, this is a semi-trenchless technology because after the new pipe is in place, spot excavation still needs to take place so that we can go down and reestablish the sewer services on that main. So, yes, it's not fully trenchless, but no, the intrusiveness of this type of technology is much less than a full-length, traditional, cut-and-cover excavation. So, this type of technology is great in corridors that have a lot of traffic, or they're tight, and you can't get in traditional excavation equipment, and/or you don't want extended shutdowns. So, the city is utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract this time around for the most competitive pricing. AUI, our contractor, they have burst in the city of Prescott before, so they're familiar with the area, and they're familiar with the challenges of bursting in our city. City staff and the contractor have been talking about this year's program, and both parties are ready to go, so we are recommending a ward today. And additionally, as with our previous pipe bursting programs, council is invited to come out and watch a burst. I know Councilman Blair, you have witnessed before and taken us up on our invitation and found it very interesting.
I'm big into sewer stuff.
Oh, yeah. So, anybody who would like to see pipe bursting in action, please contact Public Works or myself, and we will do our best to coordinate our pipe burster schedule with your own schedule so you can take a look at that. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bay. Any questions or comments from the council? Let's see, Councilman Tenny?
So, Eric, I have every confidence that you looked at the dynamics and logistics of this and decided that pipe bursting is the way to go regarding, or excuse me, with comparison to the regular, like you say, cut-and-cover, trenching and whatnot. Can you give us a...all other things being equal, can you give us a quick cost comparison versus the other more traditional, more invasive, difficult, probably time-consuming method that obviously there's some downsides to? And once again, I'm not questioning whether you should go that direction. I don't do this for a living. You do. I'm with you 100%, but I'm interested in the cost comparison.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So, the cost comparison varies with how deep the existing sewer is. Where the cost of installation for pipe bursting is going to remain rather consistent at variable depths, the cost of cut-and-cover installation varies quite dramatically depending on if the pipe is four foot, six foot, eight foot, or even deeper than that. Roughly, per linear foot with the whole program, which includes the service reestablishment, repairing the manhole, is that because they get damaged quite significantly when you're restarting and ending the burst and pulling the pipe into place, you're looking at about $150 per linear foot. Cut-and-cover for a lot of this program at an average depth, I would estimate by the time you include the pipe installation, pavement replacement, traffic control, you're probably looking at something closer to $250 a foot. So, I would say about 2/3 of the price is a good, rough estimate.
That's fantastic. Great. I had assumed it would be more expensive, not less expensive. That's great.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, you answered my question. My concern was about the cost per linear foot, so thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertainer motion?
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2022-104.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protem as I have a conflict and need to recuse. Thank you all for a great afternoon.
Approval of city contract number 2022-090 with Phan Contracting, Inc. for the Rodeo Grounds rainwater harvesting and aquifer recharge project.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. Matt Colleen, Environmental Corps and Public Works. It's my pleasure to present for you today for consideration, rainwater harvesting project at the Rodeo Grounds. This is a partnership project in all reality with the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. It's a grant through the Arizona Department of Water Resources, which is providing partial funding for this project. So, to provide a little bit of depth to what you have in your bid pack, excuse me, the packet today, the concept that we're going with here is something that really combines the best benefits of active or cistern-type rainwater harvesting with the additional benefits that you would see in rain gardens or passive systems. So, you get the storage that is of the active systems and the recharge that it comes with the passive systems. Now, one of the things you don't get in a system like this is you don't have evaporative loss, which can be considerable given our environment, and we also don't get the mosquitoes, which I'm sure many people have either had the misfortune to deal with this monsoon to deal with this monsoon season or have had calls on. So both of those things are not present in a system like this. And it's also a case that we're not reinventing the wheel here. One of our partners, Prescott Valley, did a demonstration project like this at one of their facilities as a methods of demonstrating the potential for well owners to do active recharge for their own well field at their residences. And so we've taken lessons learned from those projects and applying it here in the city of Prescott. So why the rodeo grounds? Well, to do rainwater harvesting, we obviously need to have impervious surfaces. So those rooftops that you see in the top-left picture on the slide are all part of the system, as are some of the paved walkways that lie below them. The top right, that old advertisement for the rodeo is meant to symbolize the permanence of that site. And that's something that if we're going to invest the city's funds, we want to have a stable site that can accommodate it long into the future. Bottom right is meant to represent the audience that this site brings with it so that we can share the city's efforts to do rainwater harvesting and active recharge of our aquifers. The one cause for investigation is pictured in the bottom left in that we know that a site this old does have a history of manipulation. And so we needed to take that into consideration as we designed this project in-house. So the catchment area is illustrated in the top-right corner with the three yellow rectangles is estimated at just a little over 3/4 of an acre. So based on the design estimates, we're looking at around 0.87 acre-feet per year. Now, what we can't really calculate, but will augment that, is the spring flows that are present just on the north side of Barn B. There's an old spring box there that is constantly oozing. And if you look in the photo, let me see if I got it. Oh, there we are. So this area is actually shaded there, but it's actually a wetted area where that spring box had kind of exuded water. And so we had a permanently soggy area that went at this diagonal course. And about three years ago, that was captured into a concrete pipe, which is, we're building off of not constructing for this. This area, these pixelated areas represent the discharge in cubic feet per second. For folks that have been out there, there's a kind of wetland area that is in that kind of northern part there. It's a ditch that can be kind of a traffic hazard at times. And this would remove the wetted ditch that is currently there. So this also has pretty significant water quality benefits. In the top-left photo, you'll notice that we do have a number of pollutants there. Pollutants, this is a relative pollutant hotspot, honestly, in that all of our creeks are impaired for E. coli, which are contained in livestock manure. And then also the nutrients that impair Watson Lake are also found on this site. We've worked in partnership with the Department of Environmental Quality to fund the bio basin, which is pictured in the top right. And this sinuous flow path has a recharge zone in it. It's been overexcavated and put in with coarse material so that it can absorb additional waters and feed the plants that are in that basin, the native and drought-tolerant plants that are in that basin. But we still do see sediment discharge, which we monitor on an annual basis, as evidenced by these photos here showing relative turbidity levels and what is probably associated E. coli levels with it. So despite, you know, ongoing efforts to make improvements there, this is the type of discharge that we do see at that site. And so by installing a rainwater harvesting plan like that, we are reducing the amount of sheet flow that is coming across that dirt lot, reducing that traffic hazard kind of wet ditch as well. And as part of the design consideration, if that system is overwhelmed, it actually feeds directly into that bio basin as pictured in the top right. So that water is going from the rooftop all the way to the bio basin in overflow circumstance. And going through here, additional chances to recharge or feed our native plants before discharging into the creek without the associated pollutants. As noted in the council packet today, this is the location of it. As I mentioned, everything from this point back towards Barn B is existing infrastructure. The goal here is to tie into what we already have and make it compatible with the uses that this site has currently and is likely to have into the future. And to that point, we have designed a number of maintenance points on the recharge field here. But we also did things like recess the cleanouts from the surface level so that traffic impacts were not there. The storm tech chambers that are being utilized are traffic graded. And so to the casual observer, this is something that would likely disappear after construction, but we'll know it's there and it's working for us on a daily basis. So what next steps would look like? Should you approve, we would go quickly into a construction phase as this being a grant-funded project does have timelines associated with it. But we'll also be doing a fair amount of water quality and water recharge monitoring out there. Water quality is required through our municipal separate storm system permit that is ongoing. But we'll also, for the purposes of the grant, be monitoring water recharge as well. And then also, as previously alluded to, there are outreach components to this. We have an outreach sign at the Rodeo Bio Basin currently, likely to augment that possibly over by the Barn B spring box. It's currently located there. And of course, coordinating at every step of the way with rodeo operations to make sure this is something that is both compatible and a benefit to all involved. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments you have.
Thank you. Councilman Blair?
You made the comment in coordination with the Upper Verde Watershed Coalition that they have an amount that they're bringing forward. Can you share with us what that amount is, so what our final cost would be?
Yeah, it's just a hair over $31,000. And so that would reduce the effective cost of this by almost a third.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. You know, I support the rodeo grounds and the rodeo 100% and also rainwater harvesting. I think this is a wonderful project. But I just have a question, considering the $65,390.65 that the city is providing. Will the lease with the rodeo ground, would the rodeo ground lease have to be amended so that the city can spend this money as an improvement?
So we did absolutely look at that. And so with the initial lease that the rodeo grounds have, the entirety of this project is actually outside of those areas covered by that lease.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Public comments, Sarah?
No.
Okay, I'd accept a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2022-090.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Passes 6-0. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, I think that wraps up our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.